It is 5:30 here, September 1st, 2020, and we're back for a city council meeting to talk once again about the police. And I want to welcome everyone, and let's start by taking role.
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
And Mayor Gofol.
I am here, and again, I want to welcome everyone and just say that this is not our first conversation with the police or about the police this year. We've had an excellent series of conversations, some of them hosted by the city council, some of them hosted by our police department. And so this is not our first conversation. In the past, some of our conversations were stopped prematurely or cut off because we ran into the beginning of a meeting and we wanted to make sure that we had a forum, just like tonight, where we gave plenty of time to anyone who wanted to voice their concerns. This won't be the last meeting, and so we will continue this conversation as long as we have to. So I want to welcome everyone and just say thank you for joining us. Now, Chief, are you ready? You've got a presentation for us?
I am, sir.
Excellent.
Okay, I will share my screen here. Are you all able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. Last time I was before you, we took a comprehensive look at the police department budget and policy. Tonight, we're going to take the same type of look. I've been asked to provide a comprehensive review of our recruitment, hiring, training, and accountability practices. So that's what we intend to do. Jumping right in, we'll begin with recruitment. Our goals and strategies are similar, I would anticipate, to most law enforcement agencies as we strive to seek well-educated, experienced, well-rounded, compassionate individuals to come and work in our city. Diversity, obviously, is a major component of what we look for, not only the way people look, but a diversity, diverse backgrounds, diverse experiences. You'll notice, for those of you who have interacted with our staff here and our workforce, that we have folks that share a wide range of opinions, backgrounds, and experiences that come together to make up our department, and we're proud of that. Recruiting is a very competitive endeavor, especially in today's environment, and the ability to successfully recruit is crucial if we're going to provide the level of service that we expect here in San Mateo. So just to begin, we'll start with the basics. On the box to the left, you'll see what is traditionally the minimum qualifications that we look for in a police officer. With the exception of two little areas there, those are basically dictated and articulated by the state. Those are the legal requirements of what it takes to be a police officer in the state of California. The two that we've added on the left-hand box there is an educational requirement, where we essentially require an AA degree or an equivalent, whether it's through college units or military service. Otherwise, everything else you see there is mandated by statute and the minimum requirements for what it takes to be a police officer in the state. On the right-hand side, you'll see what we look for here in San Mateo. Everything from education to experience to maturity. I like to focus down here at the bottom. When I look at candidates, I look at those who display some integrity, a high moral character, they display good judgment, and based on their background, show a good ethical foundation, as well as the ability to critically think in an effective way and a strong awareness of who they are and the environment that they work in. So how do we recruit? These are just some examples of what we do here in San Mateo to reach the most broad candidate pool possible. We basically say no to nothing. If there's an opportunity to go out and recruit and reach people that we wouldn't normally reach, we're there, we're going to say yes. Everything from the traditional magazine articles and social media sites to some things that you don't normally see in this area. We've tried the Sam Strams Bus Wrap, which lasted for quite some time, and any other avenue that we can leverage to bring qualified folks to our department. We're at all public events within the city, trying to put the word out and establish that pool. Diversity, as I mentioned, is a big deal, and we're always looking for avenues on how we can reach a more diverse group of folks and how we can get our message out. Earlier this year in February, we actually met with an NAACP to discuss just that, on how we can reach diverse applicants and get them to become interested in law enforcement and apply for positions here. A large portion of what we do is developing candidates from within our own San Mateo family. You know, our Police Explorer program usually has between six to 18 members in it. Our POW program serves over 800 kids. And while these programs aren't designed to recruit police officers, in fact, that's the farthest thing from the goal. We're looking to develop the qualities in young people to make them successful in whatever route they choose to take in life, just to give them the foundation. We do, a byproduct of that, is a small group of individuals that gravitate towards what we do, and that's worked out well. As well as, you know, our parking enforcement, our former parking enforcement officers out there, as well as our park rangers, you'll notice, or if you were to look at our ranks, a lot of our police officers have moved on from those assignments and become police officers here at the police department. So how are we doing? As I mentioned, we prioritize a diverse workforce here at San Mateo, and this is what we look like over the last 20 years. You'll notice about 20 years ago, 91% of our staff was male, 91% of our staff was white, and we're definitely moving in the right direction. You'll notice that we're trending in a manner that we want to be trending. We've seen a significant increase in the diversity of our workforce from the, as far as ethnicity, we've over-tripled the ethnicities other than white individuals in our department over the last 20 years. And we've made a strong effort in hiring more women as well, and have been fairly successful in that area as well. We still have work to do, we're not there yet, but where we're going and where we're headed, we think, is in a very positive direction when it comes to building the workforce that we're seeking. So what does that mean, and how do we compare to others? So I'll direct your attention to the right. The way that we measure our police department or how we compare our police department to other agencies throughout the country is based on the population that we serve, and we are in a category of police departments that serve between 100 and 250,000 residents. You'll notice that the national average, when it comes to workforce for that, is 88% male and 73% white. So by that standard, we're doing pretty well. We exceed those numbers from a diverse perspective by a substantial margin, however, you know, we're not there yet. And then over to the left, you'll see how we compare to the city as a whole. Again, about, almost a quarter of our workforce are women. We have two women beginning the police academy in mid-September, so those numbers should go up, and we're excited about that. And then over to the far left, you'll see that the top pie chart there represents what our police department looks like from a demographic perspective and how that compares to the city as a whole. You'll notice that we have some work to do in representing the Hispanic population, as well as Asian and Pacific Islander populations, and we're working hard to continually recruit in those areas. Those are recruiting efforts and kind of our philosophy and approach to how we recruit and the workforce that we're looking for. How does the hiring process work, and what does all this mean? What we've done is we've tried to create a flow chart here that starts today. So if we were to identify, just to try to give you some perspective and understand what the process is, if we were to start today and identify a vacancy in the police department, this is the timeframe in the process. We would initially, we have a constant recruitment process, we're constantly recruiting, we don't wait for vacancies to occur, we try to maintain a qualified applicant pool, knowing that the vast majority of those applicants will not successfully navigate through this process and become police officers. So if we were to start today, we would identify that pool, we would begin the interview process, that would take about a month or so, and once we select suitable applicants, they would move on to our background investigation process. Now, this is the most challenging and difficult process of the whole hiring chart, and we'll talk about how the background investigation works, and we'll get a little deeper into that in a subsequent slide. But that background investigation will take about three months, and I'll go through the specifics of what that entails in just a minute. Should a candidate be successful in that background investigation, they'll move on to some final tests, which include a psychological assessment, a polygraph, and a medical exam. Should they make it through that, they're not done yet, that packet comes to our hiring group and to me, and I meet with our hiring team, and they present the candidate to me. We have a pretty thorough and comprehensive meeting where we review all of the background items and the qualities of the applicant in determining whether or not they're going to move on to the final step, which is the chief's interview. At that point, they will be scheduled for an interview with me, and should that interview go well, they will be provided with a conditional job offer. So you'll notice that if we were to start today, it would be, you know, early next year before we even got to the point where we were extending a job offer to what we would hope is a qualified candidate. So we talked, I talked a little bit about the background investigation, and here is everything that that entails. The background investigation is more of a process, and it's an investigation just like any other investigation we conduct here at the police department. Some background investigations are done internally, we'll assign them to staff that are employed here, others are assigned to outside background investigators, who are typically former police officers, former investigators, and that's basically dependent on capacity and what we can handle at the time. I won't run through all of these, but I'd be happy to answer any questions once we conclude here, but the personal history statement is a big deal. It's having, ironically, I've gone through this background investigation here in San Mateo not too long ago, so I know what it entails. The personal history statement is basically a candidate sitting down and listing their entire life out from the time that they're very young. Every address they've ever lived at, every school they've attended, every job they've held, everybody they've ever lived, every person they've ever lived with, anything you can imagine we're going to ask about in that personal history statement. That personal history statement is a big deal because it's the basis for the rest of the background investigation, and we lose a lot of candidates because they don't accurately fill out that statement, or they omit, or mislead the background investigator with that type of information. We ask a lot about, not crimes that they've been caught for in the past, but crimes that they may have committed in the past, and we get pretty personal and pretty in-depth about what they've done up to this point in their life. And a lot of times, people get concerned about sharing that information, and ironically, it's not the information itself that is often the disqualifying factor, it's their lack of honesty or being forthcoming, which is our main concern. So we conduct a criminal history check. The one thing that we do do, that every law enforcement agency does that is time-consuming, is we send out inquiries to every law enforcement agency where an applicant has lived, worked, or attended school. We have a series of questions about contacts with the police in all of those jurisdictions, obviously, a credit check, all types of verification, and we will check all references provided by the applicant. We will also seek references not provided by the applicant. We'll speak with former employers, we knock on neighbors' doors, we ask references for who we speak with, with additional references that the applicant has not provided. It's a very thorough and intrusive process that takes a long time. So in today's world, social media is a big deal, and we review all accessible social media sites that the applicant may have, and sometimes that can get folks in trouble. And we say thorough interview by a background investigator, but that's really a series of interviews. This is more of a process where the background investigator is in constant communication with the applicant, verifying information, and making sure that we know everything we possibly can about this applicant prior to getting them on board. There's obviously two ways that we hire police officers. One is what we call entry-level police officers, those without any experience, have never been to a police academy, and are basically just brand-new, and we're going to start from scratch in providing them the training that they need. The other is what we call a lateral police officer, and those are officers that are employed by other police agencies that may want to come to San Mateo for a variety of reasons. We're often an attractive destination for laterals based, our compensation is very competitive, the size of our agency is very attractive to officers that are working for smaller departments, there's a little bit more opportunity here, and our relationship with the community is an attractive factor as well for those who are looking to work in a positive environment. A lateral police officer goes through everything you see on the left-hand side, but they also go through an extensive background within the agency that they're working for currently. We have access to all personnel files, internal affairs files, anything, prior background investigations that the existing agency had conducted, everything that would be in a file regarding the applicant. They are required to sign a waiver and allow us to have access to that. So we pretty much know everything about their professional background or everything that their current employer knows prior to them moving on in the process. So once somebody successfully navigates through the hiring process and the background process, background process is where we lose most folks, and the vast majority of individuals, frankly, do not make it through the background investigation. But should you, and then we bring you on, and you become part of the San Mateo Police Department family, and it's time to go to the police academy. We use two, primarily two, police academies locally, out of both convenience and we like the academies, we think they do a good job in producing strong trainees. The minimum number of hours required by the state for a police academy is 664. Both of our academies, the Alameda County Sheriff's Police Academy and the South Bay Regional Academy, which has campuses at CSM, we primarily use CSM, but they also have a campus in San Jose and Monterey, and we'll use San Jose once in a while, depending on the availability of spots. This is, obviously, we're, not only do we compete for candidates, we compete for spots in police academies as well. But as you'll see there, both academies significantly exceed the required number of hours prescribed by the state. The 664 is the minimum number. At South Bay, they're providing almost 900 hours, and at Alameda, it's just over 1,000. And what is taught at the police academy? There are a total of 42 learning domains that each recruit must successfully pass. This is a list of all 42 of those. The highlighted areas are the areas where our local academies have provided enhanced instruction, meaning the number of hours, the excess number of hours that were mentioned on the previous slide, are focused on the areas that are highlighted there. So that's the overall curriculum of an academy, which takes about six months for a recruit to complete. So once you complete the basic police academy, you're really just getting started. You'll then enter a field training program, sometimes it'll be called, you'll hear it referred to as the FTO program, a Field Training Officer Program. The minimum number of weeks required by the state for a field training program is 10. You'll notice that our minimum number is 18, and I'll show you what that curriculum looks like here in a minute. But the field training program is comprised of four phases, each phase is about one month long. This program can be extended if we're not satisfied with the progress of the recruit. And honestly, the field training program is much more difficult than the police academy, and from a training perspective, we lose more recruits in the field training program than we do in the police academy. In the police academy, you're in a controlled environment, it's a fairly academic setting, and you're also grouped with 30 or 40 other people who are all kind of in the same boat. It does build some camaraderie, but you can navigate through that a little bit easier rather than sitting with one evaluator 12 hours a day in the field, being evaluated on a continuous basis. So the field training program is much more stressful and is where we see our new officers. If they're going to have problems within the whole training program, it's going to be in the FTO program rather than in the police academy for the most part. As far as the areas we cover in the FTO program, there are 30 of them, and you see all of them there, that's the, that's the curriculum that we provide in our FTO manual. Our FTO manual is certified by the state of California. Each day, a recruit will receive what we call a daily observation report, or DOR. It evaluates where they're at, whether they are operating in a level that is acceptable. We don't accept that, we don't expect them to sit into a police car on the first day and know how to do the job from A to Z. In fact, the police academy frankly does not teach you that, but we do expect to see significant progress as they move from the academy through the FTO program. In an effort to expedite that or to make that a little bit more seamless, prior to their FTO program, we provide them two weeks of in-house training in between the academy and the FTO program. The academy will teach you the basics, it will teach you the nuts and bolts about being a police officer, it will not teach you how to be a San Mateo police officer. So that two-week interim between the academy and the FTO program is to make that transition to being a San Mateo police officer, where we believe the standard is very, very high. So you have about 944 hours in the field training program, that number can be more, depending on whether we choose to provide additional training based on the performance of the recruit. At the conclusion of the FTO program, we also want to make sure that when we put our officers out on the street, they can speak proficiently about what we do here at the police department. The FTO program will teach you the basics about being a patrol officer. I will tell you that I've been a police officer for over 26 years now, and I learn something new every day, and I never stop learning. So I don't know that it would ever be possible to say that we've completely trained a police officer in everything there is to know about the job. Our job has become, or this profession has become, a little bit more specialized, and that makes it difficult for to be the master of all. You know, you can't really be a jack-of-all-trades when it comes to law enforcement. However, we do want our police officers to be able to speak intelligently about things that we do in the police department that they may not have specific expertise in. For example, we don't expect them to know how to be a dispatcher. However, we do see the value of them sitting with a dispatcher to understand the principles and the basics of what a dispatcher has to go through on a daily basis to understand that job. Same thing with records or investigations or traffic. Those are specialized areas that a more experienced police officer will have the opportunity to receive additional training in. So you're not really done yet, you've gone through the basic police academy and then followed by a field training program. After graduating the field training program, you move into a probationary period. The probationary period for a police officer here in San Mateo is 18 months, that's from the very beginning, that's from the hire date to the end. During the probation period, probationers will receive evaluations from their supervisor every two weeks for the first half of their remaining probation. So if they have six months left on probation when they clear the FTO program, for three months, they will be receiving two-week evaluations. Should those evaluations be satisfactory, they will move on to their final three months, where they will receive monthly evaluations throughout the remainder of their probationary period. So from hiring to completion, we're looking at about 2,000 hours of total training for a new police officer. So what does that look like as far as bringing somebody on? So again, we're using today, kind of, if we were to initiate a hiring or background process today of a brand-new police officer, we really wouldn't experience having that merit employee out on their own to be a full-time, regular police officer until about July 2022, when it came down to it, as far as providing the necessary training and the steps to build a full-time police officer. So once you achieve that status and you become the merit employee that you're looking to be, the training never stops. We are managed by the organization, a state commission called the Police Officers Standing and Standard in Training. Their requirement for all police officers, and dispatchers for that matter in the state, is for 24 hours of what's called continued professional training every two years. That's the minimum requirement here at San Mateo. We provide 60 hours of training every two years, or 30 hours each year. So we significantly exceed the number of hours, and those are just the minimum number of hours that we are, that we're providing to officers, those are just the basics. All of the training we've been talking about up this point is basic training that every officer is exposed to, and this includes some of the specialized training that's included in building that police officer. Within one year of getting, of being released from probation, we have officers attend crisis intervention training, and that addresses the subject matters you see there, everything from mental illness and substance abuse to implicit bias, to dealing with individuals with Alzheimer's or dementia. Anybody who we would run into that's in crisis or has some type of need, there's a 40-hour training course that we have all of our officers attend there. And our mandated continuing training includes perishable skills such as first aid and CPR and those types of things, as well as principled policing, which is a full day that covers procedural justice, ethics, and a bias awareness component. So all of the training I've spoken to to this point is for a basic police officer. And when I say basic police officer, I mean a new police officer that gets assigned to patrol. Patrol is the face of the department, they are the officers that are out interacting with the public on a daily basis, and they do receive, as you've heard, a great deal of training. However, none of the training I've mentioned to this point has included specific training for those in specialized positions. And that specialized training is required of officers who hold specialized positions, but they also are required to complete all of the ongoing training that I mentioned before. So these are some of the specialized units that you see that require some specific training in addition to the basic training. We're always looking, quite frankly, to send officers to training courses whenever we can, especially new and innovative ways of doing things, and we're also looking to host training courses here and bring other agencies here to utilize our facility to do the same Part of our training program includes developing our own trainers. We see a great deal of value of building that expertise within the organization, both from a pragmatic or practical standpoint, it's a cost savings. If we can have our own instructors that are certified and we can provide that training, we can do it in a much more cost-efficient manner than continually having to find places to send individuals for training. It also builds an expertise within the department that makes us stronger, it makes us a better department, when we have those experts within our four walls that we can turn to when we have specific questions or concerns or are dealing with some type of specific investigation. It also makes us a resource, and we welcome other, we often welcome other agencies who will send their folks to us, to our instructors, to receive that necessary training. Okay, so we're moving on to kind of the performance management accountability process and how that works. And police departments, from a day-to-day perspective, we're not much different than any other employer or any other department when it comes to daily supervisions. We have those issues that every department has, tardiness, work product, you know, maintaining a motivated workforce, all of those things, you know, like every organization, we're going to have very strong performers, and we're going to have employees that need a little additional supervision or need a little motivation sometimes, and that's true of all organizations. Our frontline supervisors are sergeants, they work day-to-day with our line staff to establish goals and kind of identify objectives and where our employees are going. A lot of this is done as daily shift briefings. Our shifts get together every day prior to going to work. Oftentimes, they'll debrief incidents that maybe have occurred at the shift the day before or from another shift, where there are some lessons learned on how we handle that call for service, what we did well and how we can do better. There is regular training on new developments in case law or new statutes that may have been, any legislative changes that may have come up, and any timely issues. That's the... any legislative changes that may have come up and any timely issues. Um, that's the, that's the time where our sergeants do a good job of reviewing all of that with um, with uh, with staff during our briefings. Um, and also a briefing is an opportunity where uh, we can do um a training that goes beyond case law or legislative training. Sometimes posts, which I mentioned before, will issue um uh, an effective video that we, that we can, that uh, the shift can watch in a, in a fifteen-minute period that kind of um that allows them the opportunity to uh, learn more about uh, whatever the subject matter is. Um, in, in, it goes a long way because it's actually a um, a, a, a brief effective training right before going to work that we found to be um quite, quite effective. And then daily feedback, just like any good supervisor, we're going to uh, recognize and, and leverage our strong performers and check, try to continue to challenge them. The um, it's similar to other departments and other professions. The um, the danger with a strong performer is um, uh, complacency or, you know, uh job satisfaction, uh, not feeling that sense of accomplishment. If the, if it, if it seems too routine, so we're constantly challenging those that we identify as strong performers. And those who um, who uh, need to improve their performance, uh, we identify those quickly and early and try to address um, what we can do to uh, to bring that, to bring them up to where uh, an acceptable level. Um, tools for the uh, manning this, managing this type of accountability are some of the things that I've just mentioned. Um, we try to do this at the lowest level and we'll talk about progressive or in a progressive discipline model. Uh, we talked about briefing training and feedback. Um, should it escalate, uh, we have a process and, and again, this is not uh, much different from, I would suspect, from many other departments uh, within the city and many other law enforcement agencies. We have like documented counseling or record of discussion which um, which is, is basically a step up on the progressive discipline ladder. Um, uh, identifying that, hey, we've talked about this before. I, we've, we've had a conversation. Uh, that conversation may not have resonated as much as the supervisor would have liked it to. So now I'm going to document this discussion because there may be a pattern of, of um of the performance or behavior that uh, that uh, the supervisor is not satisfied with. These are usually relatively informal documents that are retained for the, the length of the evaluation period, and once that annual evaluation is conducted of that, of, of that employee by the supervisor, these uh documented discussions can be used in that evaluation, and then they're discarded. They're not permanent uh entries into a personnel file. Um, should we uh, have to take another step, there's always performance improvement plans or what we uh, not so affectionately refer to as PIPs. And that establishes a timeline and goals for a, for an employee to uh, meet certain milestones um, and achieve certain um, uh, uh, levels of acceptable performance. Um, this requires meeting with a supervisor on a regular basis, sometimes a daily borsh- a daily basis um uh, in reviewing what happened uh, on the, on the shift before they go home and whether or not progress was made, uh, made in, in improving performance. All part of the progressive discipline model. Those are your basic supervision tools that usually happen at the line level in conjunction with mid-managers. Um, there are certain areas within the department um that require administrative review regardless of whether there's been an identified um, concern or, or gap. Um, and uh, and these include um use of force, uh, vehicle pursuits, um, and other, uh, other um uh, areas such as um on-duty collisions, uh, the manner in which we use our automated license plate readers, the audit process there, and an audit of um, how we book and maintain property and evidence. Uh, those are areas where um, uh, uh, an administrative review is required regardless. So if we take use of force, for example, if there is a uh, if, if officers encountered a subject who um, had a warrant for their arrest and they were going to take that person into custody and that person resisted and they had to um, apply some type of um, a control hold um, or um, some type of force to put that person into handcuffs to um safely and effectively take them into custody. Um, a use of force form will be completed. It will be reviewed by a supervisor, uh, meaning a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a captain. Um, all of the um, uh, available uh items pertaining to that event will be available to all of those reviewers, including uh, police reports and body cor- body worn camera footage. Um, should the, it, should it be on its face, um, be within policy and it's clearly that um, which most of the time is, um, it'll, uh, it'll go through um, those three levels of review. If there's any question, um, wha- uh, whether it's outside of policy um, and there uh, there requires additional investigation, any one of those three reviewer, reviewers can um, can identify a need for additional um, investigation and that instance will move on to an internal affairs investigation, which we will talk uh, in a second, uh, talk about in a second. And that's true for any one of these administrative reviews. If uh, if there's any question whether it falls outside of policy, um, through those multiple levels of, of of review, it will move on to uh, to an internal affairs um, investigation. So there are a couple of different ways, uh, and we'll talk about this in a second. There are a couple of different ways we uh, we um we conduct administrative reviews and internal affairs. One is we identify the behavior or performance internally, uh, which is often the case. The other is we receive complaints from the public. And how do we receive complaints? We receive complaints by any and all avenues available. Um, they're all acceptable, um, and they are all um, appropriate. Uh, we do not uh, deny receiving a complaint or tell somebody they have to go fill out a form or, or anything like that. We do ask that they fill out a complaint form only because uh, it's a benefit to the uh, subsequent investigation to have a written summary um, in the, in the, in the complainant's own words um, of that complaint. Um, that makes it a lot easier for us to understand the complaint and to conduct a subsequent investigation. Uh, but complaints are initially handled usually by a supervisor. If a, if an officer receives a complaint in the field, um, by policy, they are directed to refer it immediately to a supervisor. Uh, we um, have complaint forms available on our website. Uh, we rece- you know, calling in a dispatch, walking into the police department. All of those are, are um, are uh, manners in which we receive complaints. Sometimes I get complaints directly to my office. Sometimes I get them to the city council or the city manager's office. All of those are complaints that are followed up on. So what happens with a complaint? Most complaints are procedural or uh, or could be handled at the supervisory level. For example, we often get complaints if somebody gets a ticket for uh, running through a stop sign. Um, they'll call up oftentimes complaints won't understand the nature or the process of the complaint. They'll call up and they'll be upset that they, because they believe they did not run through, or they did not fail to stop at the stop sign. So we can handle that, or the, the supervisor will handle that by explaining to the caller that, hey, we understand your complaint. Uh, we understand what you're upset about. However, that's not a, that's not a performance complaint. That's a complaint that needs to be handled in traffic court, and you can explain yourself to the traffic commissioner. So we get a lot of procedural complaints um, that uh, that we um uh, direct folks to the appropriate um avenue on how they're, on how they would be handled. Most of, most of the uh, those types, mostly the complaints you receive are um, folks having questions, not understanding what's going on, and we're able to deal with those at the at the um, at the uh, supervisory level. However, uh, there are two ways that um, a complaint um graduates to what we call an internal affairs in- investigation. Um, and it doesn't have to be a complaint. I shouldn't say that. There are two ways of, of behavior or performance um, graduate to internal affairs investigation. The first is the um, the severity of the alleged action. Um, if there's an alleged crime, if there's an alleged significant policy violation, um anything that would bring discredit to uh, the department, um, whether it's on duty or off duty, will automatically go to an internal affairs um, investigation. The uh, the, the other um, uh, manner in which it can end up in internal affairs investigation, it may be very, it may be a behavior that um, should be able to be addressed at the supervisory level. However, it's, it's uh, every step that is taken to this point has not been successful, all the way to a, a performance improvement plan, documented counseling, uh, whatever it may be um, that the employee uh, is not responding to that. Um, and then uh, it, it may graduate to internal affairs um, uh, complaint um, only because the, the behavior persists. Um, and there, we've, we've exhausted all other manners to try to correct it, even though it may be very minor on its face. It, it just uh, doesn't stop. Not all complaints turn into IAs. As I mentioned before, some, most of them are, are procedural in nature and we can uh, we can deal with those just as um, any other city department would uh, would process complaints. And again, um, a, a complaint is not required for an IA to be generated. Uh, IAs are oftentimes generated internally by supervisors and managers uh, becoming aware um, uh, through the supervisory process of behavior outside of policy. So what initiates an internal affairs investigation? Um, like I mentioned before, uh, misconduct. Um, the uh, uh, if an officer's behavior or performance um, is uh, not in accordance with, with, with our standard here at the police department. Um, if it involves any type of moral or ethical issue, it's a no-brainer. It goes directly to an IA. Um, and if they're in violation of department policy, obviously that's a, that's a, that's a, that's something that automatically would go to an IA. And then, as I mentioned before, it's part of the process, uh, progressive discipline um, uh, process that would uh, if all else fails, this would be um, this would be where we end up for those um, types of behaviors that would not, not normally end up here, but they continue to persist. There we, there are several code sections that uh, that dictate um what we do with IA investigations, and in today's world, these, these are changing rapidly, but uh, right now uh, there are a couple penal code sections there that um, that notify their, the complainant of their right to report um, what they perceive to be misconduct and our obligation to investigate that. Um, and obviously of the criminal consequence of filing false complaints. We don't want false or frivolous complaints, and those are, those are technically illegal. Um, but we, we are required to notify people of that, which we do uh, via our webpage. Um, and uh, we are required to have a process that is open and transparent on about how we process those complaints. And that is also described on our, on our webpage. The government code section um, provides the steps and uh, and how we proceed uh, when it comes to investigating officers and what the officer's rights are um, as part of that investigation. That's section thirty-three hundred of the government code, otherwise known as POBAR or the Public Safety Officer Bill of, Bill of Rights. So what uh, the, the pro- the process with internal affairs, um, uh, as far as discussions and how those work, um, uh, we uh, uh, an internal affairs investig- assigned either internally uh, to a member of our command staff or um, it can be assigned to an external investigator. A lot of that is dependent on the nature of the offense um, and our capacity to complete that investigation. I meet with the city manager weekly. Um, I discuss all personnel issues that have ar- arisen um, with him. Um, I talk about who's doing investigations. I talk about what those investigations are, and I talk about the status of those investigations. So uh, we are in communication on a weekly basis um, of reviewing all of those personnel issues within the department. Um, once a internal affairs investigation is completed, it goes through a review process. That review process includes me, um, and includes the city attorney, and includes the human resources uh, department as well. So um, there uh, there is um, some accountability for us as far as um uh, it just doesn't stop with, with me. Um, in fact, I rather enjoy sharing uh, having the opportunity to enjoy discussing these with my boss um, to make sure that we're on the same page um, and moving forward. And there is a strong checks and balances within our um, within our review process. And to be honest, most of the time I'm in contact with the city attorney's office prior to um, to them getting a copy of the internal affairs investigation. We're having those conversations, so that's, that works well. So from an accountability, accountability standpoint, um, I mentioned in our, in our last get-together, our accountability page. The page is relatively new. The practices within the page that we, that we describe are not. Uh, we believe that we, we do a good job of remaining, of remaining accountable. We, we like for people to know what we're doing, and we're continually making an effort to, to get better at, at allowing people the access to what we do. Um, uh, a lot of what we do is based on the six pillars within the twenty-first century policing model that was identified within the previous presidential administration. Um, and those six pillars, you can see there on the right-hand side, they're also available on our, on our accountability page. Those are kind of our guiding pillars um, for what we do, and um, and we think they're appropriate and provide for a nice, nice foundation for um, for an effective and open police department. Uh, transparency is key. Uh, we uh, we also provide all of our practices, our policies and procedures, training. All of that is included on our accountability page. Uh, we're, we do everything possible to remain open and accountability, and accountable to those that we, we serve. Uh, these are some of the topics that are um, covered on our accountability page. I think the mayor mentioned earlier that we've had study sessions before. We have um, our Real Talk Samatello, uh, which I'll mention in, in a minute again, but um those episodes are all on the accountability page, and, and when we couldn't answer questions in some of those discussion groups, we've gone back and identified those questions and actually provided responses that folks can go back and, and look at both the questions and the answers on that page. So I would encourage people that are um, that are interested uh, to do just that. So next steps, um, where do we go from here? Um, and as a police department, we're kind of excited because we have some opportunities. Uh, we've al- we've already done some significant work with policy. We've made some very substantive changes uh, to our policy, uh, which we think are, are, are very effective. Um, we are in the process of working with BHRS, which is Behavior, Health and Recovery Services at the county level to establish a co-response model, which would embed a licensed mental health clinician in the, the Samatello Police Department, uh, and would actually respond to calls for service with police officers in the field. Uh, we see tremendous value in this, uh, both um, in the manner in which calls are handled and for uh, immediate follow-up and hopefully reducing the, the calls for service that we receive involving um, folks who are suffering from some type of crisis or uh, or mental health um, uh, issue i- in, in the field. If we can identify those folks, if we're going back to the same uh, the same calls for service regarding these folks because police officers are simply um, dealing with it and moving on to the next call, um, we're not really um, closing the loop. If we have a mental health clinician, um that level of expertise by that clinician combined with um, with the police officer's familiarity um, and the ability to keep the uh, keep the situation safe, we think will uh, will result in a more effective and um and uh, and I think exciting way on, on how we can deal with these issues. Uh, we can get out there in a timely manner. Uh, we can leverage the uh, the uh, the experience and expertise of, of both disciplines to be, to be pretty effective. We've submitted our proposal to the county. We've met with the county. Um, we're now um, uh, eagerly awaiting um, next steps there with the establishment of an MOU to uh, to get this done. This would include creating workspace in our police department for this mental health clinician and have them out in the field uh, responding in, in real time. Um, which uh, which we're, we're looking very much for, we're looking forward to uh, to being able to experience that. We also have some training projects um, in, in the, in the, in the works. Uh, we continue to include de-escalation and bias awareness into into all components of our training plan. Um, there are, you know, trainings that are, training sessions that are addressed to these types of topics specifically. Um, our feeling is that um, whether you're going to, to the range to make sure you're proficient with your firearm or you're talking about defensive tactics or even report writing, um, how can we incorporate de-escalation um, principles and bias awareness into that training? Um, not just that you're proficient with a firearm, but um, really thinking through and forecasting the situ- a situation that you may be in and what are your alternatives rather than uh, than, than using uh, certain levels of force? And uh, more of a critical thinking approach rather than uh, rather than just checking the box. And I think um, we, we, that's resonated well with staff to this point. Um, just uh, on a, on a semi-related note, we have a first responder training for interacting, interacting with uh, individuals who suffer from dementia, um, specifically Alzheimer's. This is um, training that's provided by the Alzheimer's Association. We, we were actually um, it's kind of personal to me. Al- Alzheimer's and dementia have impacted my family in a very significant way. And a, a member of our community reached out to uh, to me and uh, and thought this would be worthwhile. After looking into it, I was um I was uh, very, very interested, and I think that uh, that we've, we are, we've already had a few officers go through the training and they've, they found it productive, and so that'll be hap- that'll be happening in the immediate future. And then we're in the beginning stages of developing a mindfulness slash resiliency training. Um, so I'll be honest, in my prior agency, I, I, I I implemented this, this type of training and frankly, people thought I was a little nuts. Um, it uh, I, I, it's a, it's an um, an out-of-the-box um, approach to law enforcement training. Um, it uh, it focuses on a level of awareness and emotional intelligence that we don't always see uh, in police training. It goes a little deeper than uh, than, than our traditional training. It focuses on making um, um individuals, better individuals, better spouses, better friends, better parents, uh, with the end result of making them better police officers. Um, and I've seen the, the results of that. Um, a- and I, again, I um I took a little bit of a risk in a prior agency in doing this because it was, it was, it was very, very foreign. My belief it's going to be uh, it's going to become more of the norm as we move forward, and we've already had some pretty substantive costs, uh, con- uh, conversations about implementing that training here, which I think will um will take a work, take a- will take a work, take a, a workforce that has a really good understanding and relationship of the community and make it that much better. And I, I mentioned uh continuing the conversation earlier, obviously, the Real Talk San Mateo format is something that we've used and we're not, to be honest, we're not married to it. I mean, right now, uh, we can't get out into the community and talk to people um in person. Uh, we regret that. We'd, we'd much rather be talking to people um, you know, it, face to face. Um, and right now, we're, we're, we're doing the, the Brady Bunch Hollywood Squares format where it's a kind of a, a panel discussion. Um, and we don't know whether that's the best format. Um, um, so far, we've liked, we, and we've done it a little bit differently. We've had one that was just a listening session. Um, I've participated in most of them. The last one, I just kind of sat out because I didn't want, um, I think people have heard enough from me frankly, over the last couple of months and, and I, we had line suit, uh, line staff interact with young people. Uh, moving forward, we're looking at um, uh, a Real Talk San Mateo episode for our senior citizen population. And then after that, our Latin community um, uh, in October. So September is a, I, I, we are scheduling one for our senior student population and, and then um, and then focusing on a Spanish-speaking or, or Latin, the Latin community um in October. And we're looking for um suggestions um on, on the best way to do this. Um, you know, maybe it's a sit-down, one-on-one conversation with calls coming in. Um, maybe it's the same thing we've been doing before. Uh, we just don't know. We just don't know. We hope it's effective. We hope the conversation is, is valuable. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback. Um, but we're always looking to make it better and we would be uh, we'd be more than welcome to uh, to folks providing us feedback on, on how to make it better. Uh, we're also developing a, a community police academy. Um, in some agencies, it's referred to as the Citizens Police Academy. Um, again, COVID's throwing us a little bit of a curveball on this one, but we're trying to use it to our advantage. Uh, we're building that curriculum now. We're looking to um, if everything goes well, I mean, I don't know, we, we, I can't see the future. But if everything goes well with the, with the shelter in place orders and hopefully by, by the end of the year, early next year, we start uh, the real world comes back to some semblance of what it used to be, uh, we'd like to uh, but that would like to be our timeframe. So we're building that curriculum now and we're looking at um advertising or marketing that in the late fall. And again, we're trying to be as diverse as possible and reach everyone we can with that. So we're looking at uh doing that in multiple languages and maybe a youth academy um as well. So uh, we would love any suggestions. We know that there's some agencies that, that do that and we're learning a lot from them. And we think that'll uh, that can go a long way um in building some relationships with the community. Um, to just kind of open up our doors, let people in, see what we do, um, and increase that familiarity. At the end of the day, we're just looking for effective and innova- innovative ways to talk to everybody. Um, and uh, and we're open to any suggestions on how to do that. Um, that, we think that that's a, uh, we think we've done a lot of tangible, the tangible things. We're excited about these steps. Um, and uh, and we want to know more. Uh, we think we're, we think we're, we're moving in the right direction. We think we're, we're taking meaningful and productive steps. Um, we think we've done a good job with that in policy. We think we're doing a good job with that in communication. However, we also recognize that um, that not everyone has come to the table and we're trying to make that happen um in the best way that we can. Uh, another thing that's kind of interesting coming up at the end of the month, uh, our command staff will be participating in a four-day virtual seminar. It's free of charge, which as a police chief who has to manage a budget, I like, uh, but it's entitled Reimagining Public Safety in America. It's a national discussion. Um, and it's, it's a pretty uh deep, uh, deep dive. Um, um, I'm anxious to see uh, see how that, how that progresses. It's, it's split up into four days um to talk about how we can integrate mental health professionals into what we do, which we're, which we're actively doing. Um, and to experience what people of color, they're, they're, the, to talk about the experience people of color have when they engage with it, with us in the field. Um, the, the value of empathy training, which is built into our, our mindfulness and resiliency model. And uh, and then flipping the coin and how civilians can better understand what we do and what the experiences it is, or what is the experience of being a police officer and serving the community. Um, finally, I'll conclude here. I think this is my, my last slide, but uh, uh, we're trying to expand and we're looking for suggestions on how to expand and make our accountability page more accessible, more user-friendly. This is not up yet. This is kind of a sneak preview. This is a dashboard of what we're trying to do. And right now, we don't have the luxury of having a crime analyst like some larger agencies do. So um, some of it is capa- is a capacity issue for us about how we manage data and information. Uh, but this is a, this is kind of a dashboard approach where um, uh, a user would be able to come and click on one of these icons to learn more about this, uh, any particular field. Uh, maybe, and we're, we're shooting for monthly. Um, this is data for all of twenty nineteen. This is not live. The numbers are fairly accurate, but we have, but we're still cleaning up some of it. Um, but we're looking at may, maybe quarterly, but I, my goal would be monthly. Um, um, and down the road, maybe get a um, a really motivated intern that will never leave here and, and maybe even do it uh more frequently than that. Um, but this is what we're, these are the steps that we're trying to take in becoming more open, more uh, more transparent as a department. Uh, that, and then we just have one other project. We're uh, we're gonna be uh doing a beta test of um, uh, cameras in our, in our patrol cars, which are similar to our body worn cameras, except they provide a more um static view of what's going on. Oftentimes their body worn cameras um, with people moving around and there being a, a lot of movement, um, you don't get a clear um, uh, understanding of what's going on. And that, the dashboard camera in a patrol car sometimes provides, it's a very wide angle uh with audio that provides more of an overview where you can really understand um, and, and, and kind of view more of the scene than you would get from a body worn camera. So we're gonna beta test those beginning in October. If that works out, we uh, we will, will be looking to uh, to implement those in an effort to um, to uh, to make things more open. And they'd be, they'd be subject to the same statutes as far as released as any body worn camera would, would be. So um, that's, I think that, I think that's all I have. I'd be, I'm, be happy to um, to entertain any questions or any, any feedback.
All right. Um, Chief, thank you again. You picked a hell of a time to be a police chief in America and um, transparency is essential to building a relationship of trust, building a bridge to the, to the community. And I think that's what we want. We're, we're all here to continue that conversation and, and build a, a much stronger bond with our community, because I think many people don't know what police officers do throughout the day. Um, with that in mind, um, as I mentioned before, this is, I'm, we're trying to make this a different format than we've had in the past. I'm, I'm not gonna cut people off after one minute. I want to get through every single question and every single comment that we have. If you want to uh ask a question and have it answered, we'll make this as much a dialogue as we can. And we're gonna go through it so that everybody has a chance to be heard. Uh, I'd like to give my colleagues a chance at first to ask any questions about the presentation uh that they might have. Anybody want to go first? I don't see any. I do have hands that are starting. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Lee. Uh, and anyone who is joining us, I see forty-seven attendees. Anyone who's joining us and would like to join the conversation, has a question or a comment. Uh, I will just start calling names and we'll get through everybody till we all get tired and we want to go home. Uh, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Chief, for the thorough presentation. Um, that I, I fe- I feel like what you're presenting to, to us is a reflection of really good listening and um, and really pushing, pushing the boundaries of best practices and um, and, and to, I'm really excited about a lot of the ideas, especially the one of bringing on the cli- clinician. And um, and I wanted to ask about, um, you know, how you see that augmenting the, the smart van and how you see the service model being, you know, it's different in terms of the, you know, having a clinician there uh as a co-first responder versus what's in place right now with the smart van?
Sure. So uh initially, there will, there, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of actually aspects to that, to, to the answer to that question. First is um, the availability of our clinician. We, we're, we're talking about a clinician that's embedded within our police department. Now, um, full disclosure, uh, it's not gonna be twenty, we can't, we don't, it's, it's one clinician, so it's not a twenty-four hour model. We're looking for a model that would um provide the, uh, the clinician would be available during um our peak hours for calls for service, where we experience these things. And the smart van is a, is a van, is a resource that's accessible to the whole county. Um, this is a resource that would be accessible only to the San Mateo Police Department. This staff member, this mental health clinician would have a relationship with the police officers, attend briefings, be part of the police department here. Um, so we, it would be a response to the call with the police officer, um, rather than police officers getting on scene, deciding that they have to commit somebody to the hospital, calling the smart van, waiting for forty minutes for the smart van to show up. A much different model. The second portion of that, or the second part to that is, smart van's great and they, the staff that they have there is, is excellent, but they don't rise to the level of a, a true mental health clinician. So what we're looking for is, we're looking to reduce the number of these calls and we're looking to have more of a, um, an impact on the individual that may be going through the crisis. Right now, we're simply triaging these types of calls. We're getting there. We're trying to, all we're trying to do is, is fix a problem that's in front of us right at that moment. And then once we fix it, we move on to our next call for service. We anticipate that this clinician will have that, that expertise and speak the lang- the same language with their colleagues at P E or psychiatric emergency services, um, where they can do the follow-up that we just can't do. One, we don't have access to that information by law. And two, even if we did, we wouldn't understand it because it's, it would be over our heads. So we're hoping that it will provide individuals not only a more timely response, but an enhanced level of service that hope, I mean ideally, would result in fewer of these types of calls, right? Because if we were able to provide more sustainable uh and effective care for folks who are, who are experiencing these types of, of crises, um, hopefully we'll, it'll be, it'll result in less, in less of these types of calls at the end of the day.
Thank you. And I just had um, a couple more questions. One of, one of the questions I was interested in the um, the complaint process. You know, I, I think, you know, a lot of what has brought us to this conversation is um, is, you know, really about uh the, the need to, to, to look hard at racism and um, and the way that, that racial bias has played a part in um, in the incidences of police brutality. And so I'm curious, when we're, when we're collecting data on complaints, are we aggregating um complaints uh and, you know, categorizing them and um tracking if there are um repeat complaints about racial bias incidents? Is that something that is, that, that we have visibility to in our tracking in the complaint process?
Yeah, I, I will be, I will be, so the, thankfully, um, the volume of those types of complaints are extremely low. Um, and should we uh get a, a complaint regarding any type of uh racial bias or discrimination or any, any allegation that an officer acted based on um, on race? Uh, that's, that's a um, one of those policy violations that would go directly to an internal affairs investigation. Uh, those are fairly easy to track. So do we aggregate them though, only because um, we don't have the volume of those types of complaints? Fortunately, thankfully, I think it speaks a, a, a lot to um, the nature of our police department that we don't. Um, but uh, we, we could probably go back and, and research those without having to um, do a lot of digging. So I guess the answer to your question is, is yeah, that information's available, but um, but because they're so infrequent, uh, that we don't, we don't track them like that.
Okay, thank you. And then the last question I had was, I, we didn't um, we didn't totally cover this. It was a little bit out of scope of the presentation, but I wanted for the public to um have an understanding of where we are with the SRO program, because there's been a lot of news about it. And I mean, I think some of the news is presented um falsely that the SROs are completely going away. Um, and I wanted to give you a chance to explain where we are and um, in terms of staffing and capacity for that program.
Sure. So we're, I mean, we're extremely proud of the SRO program in San Mateo. And I, I will be honest, when I, I was a police chief, obviously, in another agency, um, and when we looked to how to, how to um, build our SRO program, we frankly looked to San Mateo as the model. Uh, the, the, the SRO program here is, 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 is a special program and it's, it's been, it's been very strong for some time. Right now, um, typically, the police department budgets for three school resource officers. Um, and the funding me- the funding mechanism for that is the city funds a um, one, one position and then each of the school districts, the San Mateo Union High School District and the San Mateo Foster City School District, each fund uh one additional um, position resulting in three. How those SROs are deployed, they're each deployed to one of the three public high schools and to the associated middle school or junior high school that feeds into that particular school. So the SRO kind of builds a relationship, a rapport, and really understands the students who are transitioning from middle school to, to uh, to high school. Um, it's been a very productive program. Um, right now, um, I'm actually meeting with the superintendent of the high school district tomorrow. Um, but they have decided to um, to pause the program only because, oh, I don't know if it's only because, but the, the, the essence of their conversation at their meeting was that with COVID and um, students not being on-site at the school, um, to hold off and for six months and then reevaluate after that. Um, so I'll, I'm, I hopefully will learn more tomorrow. The um, San Mateo Foster City School District has chosen to um, to um, to end that agreement or end that uh, uh, that contract. Um, so we're hopeful that gets revisited in the future. I will tell you, we continue to have one full-time SRO that's funded by the city. Um, that uh, school resource officer is extremely busy, is in touch with um, school administrators on a, on a daily basis. Uh, we have a, a very robust youth services program and a, a, a youth diversion program. And our only goal with SROs and our youth services program is to keep kids out of the criminal justice system. Um, and what we've, we've been able to do that in two ways. One is we've been able to identify, you know, certain red flags that um, sometimes it's, it's truancy, sometimes it's something else that, hey, this, this, this young person may, may be going down the wrong path and we can offer them a diversion option and, and work with their family. And the other is, is, is kids who actually commit crimes, they're very low-level crimes where typically our, our only alternative in the past was to refer that to the district attorney's office for prosecution. Now, we don't have to do that. Now, we, we actually have a proba- probation officer housed and embedded in, in uh, at San Mateo PD where the DA's office will never see that case, never see it for prosecution. And we can offer them a diversion that they need to complete in order for that case to go away. So we still, um, we, those, those programs are still in effect. Uh, we uh, our diversion program is up and running at full speed. Um, our, our school resource officer is still a resource for all the schools. However, obviously, from a capacity standpoint, asked to do a whole bunch, you know, three, the, the one SRO now is asked to do what three SROs um had been doing. And granted, kids aren't in school now, so it's a, it's a different um ask. I know that in March, when this all kind of caught us all by surprise, uh, the, the most, the, the schools um leaned on the SROs to actually go to those students, typically underserved families that were, that were not engaging in distance learning, whether they didn't have access to a computer or they didn't have access to wifi. And the SROs went out there and, and figured out whatever the problem was and we got them the resources they, they, they needed to engage in uh, in that distance learning. My understanding is that that's gonna be addressed um through other means. I'm hopeful that that happens. Um, but the SRO program is, we still have one full-time SRO. We still have a youth services bureau that provides those services to um, to uh, to our young people. And uh, and we're, and again, we're hopeful that uh, that we take another look at it down the road and maybe it changes a little bit. Um, and we can, and we're always open. Um, and maybe we uh, we amend the program that better meets the needs of the school district. Um, but we're act, we're, we're obviously open to listening and, and working with them.
Any other council members? Okay. Go ahead, Eric, and um, anybody else who wants to throw out a question? Uh, I do want to ask the attendees to start raising your hands so that we can get to your questions as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Chief, for that very comprehensive uh presentation. Uh, I guess my question is, um, it, it looks like our training process and our, in our hiring process is, is very impressive. Uh, I'm curious of when things do not go as planned and, and, you know, quite frankly, we hire a bad apple or, or training breaks down or something like that. What is the process to, to do a post-mortem in that situation and to make sure we're not repeating the same mistakes and we're learning along the way, uh, every step of the way?
Sure. So there's two avenues that that happens. One is internally, obviously, we take a look at, hey, why did this happen? Um, and we, we're always looking to, to do better. The second is we're audited by the state um on a, on a, on a, a regular basis where our background investigation process um is audited and we have to maintain uh, the, the levels that I described within the presentation to make sure that we're not cutting any corners or there, um, there are no gaps. Will there be people that get through the process? Absolutely. That, and that, and I think that's across the board, that there will, there will always be people that figure out a way to um, to uh, to be manipulative and get through the process. Um, our, our goal is to continue to improve. Um, and uh, and, and we do that intern- both internally and through an external auditing process by the state.
Great, thank you. And one last question. Um, can you, uh, I, I asked a similar question uh on the last one of these. Can you point to any um, changes that you, you've made in our training or recruitment process? Or anything, I guess, you've covered this evening that you saw uh when you came in, that you felt like it needed to be um updated, changed, improved?
Yeah, the, the only thing I, I would say is- Yeah, the, the only thing I, I would say is, um, I took a deep dive into our training plan, which is available online. Um, and wanted to make it a little bit more comprehensive. Um, and uh, and I think that we've done that. So I would, I would take a look at uh, the training plan. I think that um, that um, that I, I'm, I'm happy with that. Um, I'm very excited about the training opportunities that we, that we discussed in the, in the presentation uh, moving forward. And I think from a policy standpoint, um, we made some significant changes. And I think um, some of those changes were as a result of the current national conversation. But frankly, some of those changes were in the process before that happened. Um, only because there was a new guy in town, right? Those are fresh set eyes and, and I was coming in to, 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 um, to kind of um, tweak things a little bit. Um, but I think that uh, I think that we've made some, some significant changes both in training and policy. Um, and I think we've seen um, kind of a change in uh, in approach where people are really buying into it. And I think, and I'm noticing that uh, that um, people are, people are on board. And I think, I think it's a good thing right now.
Thank you, Chief.
You want me to unmute and then say council member happened? Sorry. And then, and then I see your hand too, Rick.
Uh, I, I want to thank you Chief for the presentation. In thinking about this meeting tonight, there were certain things I was looking for. Um, as it related to hiring, I was looking for, what is the focus on diversity? And how are you going about trying to give us um, a more diverse police force? As it related to training, I was really focused on what am I going to hear tonight about de-escalation? And what I didn't think about, but what I liked hearing about was the idea of empathy. Cause I think that is something that if folks as a person have it and then they're bringing it to their job, um, we're all going to benefit. So I was pleased to hear about that. My question comes in on the last part with accountability. And um, I'm just wondering, eh, eh, what I was looking for was transparency and I understand if somebody makes a complaint, the process by which the complaint will be looked into. I'm just wondering, how does that get back, reported back to perhaps the member of the public that was making the complaint? And I, maybe you said it and I just didn't hear it, but I was sort of looking for that connection, if you will.
No, I think, I, it was probably in a slide, but I didn't articulate it well. Um, the uh, so we, the law allows us to, to um, provide some information and prohibit us from providing other information. We can let the, um, we can let the member of the public know the results of the investigation and that we're handling it. We cannot um, uh, provide to the member of the public what any discipline was. Um, right now, the government code doesn't allow us to do that. So we can, we can close the loop with the public, the, the member of the public or the complainant. Um, they may not get as much information as they like, um, but we can close the loop with them. We just can't go into specifics about what action was taken regarding the officer because the government code prohibits us from doing that.
May I ask one follow-up question?
Yes.
Um, if there, if it, if the complaint results in a change in policy, is that something that you will um,
Absolutely.
Let the public know about and, and you know, put it on our website or whatever, however you want to?
Absolutely. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's where, that would be, so, I mean, and actually we, we're always, I, I would, I prefer complaints about policy rather than people, right? So if uh, if, if people can identify the way we do things better, not only will we let them know that we did it, we'll give them credit for making the suggestion. I mean, that's, that's something that we're, we're just looking to get better and uh, um, yeah, that's, that's not a problem at all. It's, it's, it's mostly tied to um, the discipline of an employee. We, our hands get tied a little bit in sharing that type of information.
I recognize. Oh, I would just want to say one other thing I was looking for was de-escalation. I like the word empathy and of course bias has to be, I think weaved in no matter, every aspect of it. Okay, thank you.
Great, Rick.
Yeah. Thank you Chief, uh, for very thorough presentation. Um, and I wanted to say that I was very happy to see the statistics that you showed on the trend regarding improving diversity in the department. Um, although we still have a ways to go, but, but I'm, I'm uh, impressed with progress made in that direction. Um, I also especially paid attention to the one slide near the end where he spoke about mindfulness and resiliency. And uh, this really impressed me because I think it goes a long way towards helping to um, um, bring people closer together. You know, the more we see each other as human beings with needs and feelings, uh, the better off we all will be. Um, that said, uh, back to the diversity thing, I was wondering, I noticed that in the vetting of the prospective police officer, one of the line items was a credit check. And I was a bit, I, I have some questions about that because uh, if we're seeking to hire people from uh, different, diverse, maybe disadvantaged backgrounds, many people of ethnic backgrounds or uh, people of color come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Um, I think that, I, I'm not sure, but we, it, it's kind of like, you remember when the SAT tests were being looked at? Because people from different cultural backgrounds didn't score as highly on them? It didn't mean that they were, were not smart or creative. It just meant they didn't know the answers to those questions. Well, for people with different economic backgrounds, I'm wondering, do we make any adjustments to allow for people who have come from difficult economic backgrounds to be able to uh, somehow remediate those issues and uh, um, step forward? I mean, are, are these issues weighted? How much weight do we put on them? So if you can respond to that, because I would like to make sure that uh, people aren't being punished. Somebody from, you know, a poor Hispanic neighborhood in Stockton might not have the same ability on those scores for economics as a kid who comes from uh, San Mateo Park and went to a CERA, right?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is, that's a state requirement, the credit check. Um, the, the premise behind the credit check, right, is, and it's true for both police officers and dispatchers, because they're both subject to the same um, background requirements, is we, we want to make sure that a police officer or dispatcher cannot be compromised, right? That they not, they are not in a financial situation that they are easily compromised and um, easily swayed to compromise their position as a dispatcher or police officer, whether they have access to certain information or they can act in a certain way in return for some monetary um, uh, you know, exchange. Um, you know, we don't want people being bribed. Um, and the, the premise behind the, the credit check is um, folks who are in a difficult fiscal situation may be more likely or more susceptible to doing that be- because they, they, and whether true or not, that's the premise. Um, I will tell you that it is a case-by-case basis, um, and that we, um, of that, we don't, there's no um, there's no credit score that's a rob, that is a cutoff. So you know, it's not like you have to have a minimum credit score of, what we do is we look at their credit report. If there are questions or concerns regarding credit, um, and otherwise we like the applicant, the background investigator, and sometimes I, and I've done this in the past, um, not too recent past, where I've either asked the background investigator to go back and say, hey, I really like this person, find out what's going on. And most of the time we can resolve why there are credit issues. Uh, we just want to make sure that A, it's somebody, it's somebody who is not misusing a credit card and acting irresponsible, irresponsibly. And two, their position as a police officer or dispatcher won't be compromised because of the situation that they're in. So there's no, there's no minimum credit score, um, but it is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Um, so I, I don't know whether that answers your question. It is a state requirement that we do that as part of the background process. I think it's a good requirement, to be honest with you, but um, I, it's not a end-all for me. It's not a, uh, it's not a thumbs up, thumb down based on a credit score. I, I usually kind of look at the totality of um, of, of everything. It's kind of like drug use nowadays, right? I mean, that, it used to be that drug use was a, was a non-starter and now that's a little bit different as well. So um, uh, I don't know whether that answers your question, but it's not a, it's not a, it's not an either or. It's um, it's just one factor in, among many.
Uh, thank you. That does go a long way towards answering my question. What I was looking for was, uh, yeah, looking a little deeper if we see some issues and using some discretion to make sure that, that, you know, those aren't like, you know, for bad reasons that could lead to bad outcomes or it's something that is, you know, legitimate, explainable and can be dealt with. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, let's bring the public into the conversation. I see the first hand is Terry Whitehair. Uh, Terry, I want to make sure you're unmuted.
I am, thank you.
Wonderful.
Um, Police Chief, I just want to thank you for the presentation. And um, I'm very impressed to hear a police chief talk about mindfulness and resiliency. I don't think I've ever heard that from a police chief, so I, I really appreciate that. Uh, one of the concerns I have was with the BHRS co-response model. Um, I s- I think that's a start, but what I would really uh, encourage is to go to a 24-hour uh, hotline that mental health professionals will respond to. And they would go out rather than just with a police officer, so that they could deal with those. The um, responses that are not having to do with guns or knives and that sort of thing, but the mental health. There, there's a, a program in Oregon that has been there going on for quite a long time, that they have mental health professionals answering the 24-hour hotline. So I'd like it to go to that model eventually. Uh, the other thing was I, your forward-thinking ideas impressed me. The idea of a guardian perspective versus a warrior perspective. And my understanding in the police academy, that the police are trained and the, the atmosphere is more towards a military type uh, a training. And for you to think about going more to a guardian perspective, I really think that's important. Uh, the other thing about reimagining public safety, I would like to see the community involved in that. Like what is we as a community want, want to see and what does safety mean for our own community? Not just being police in that conversation, but the whole community. What does it mean for our whole community? And the other thing that you mess- mentioned Chief, that I agree with, is in these um, uh, real talk conversations, um, to really try to get more diversity. Cause what I've noticed is, it's the people that are in on the conversations are homeowners, long-term residents and business owners. And I think we need a more diverse and try to encourage and go out and bring more diverse uh, people into the conversations. And I understand from what you said, you're thinking about that and want that to happen. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Terry. Uh, I appreciate your comments and your questions. Let's go to the next uh, next person with their hand up, which is Crystal Flower.
Hi there. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time, Chief Barberini, and also for the city council, uh, for doing this meeting with us. And uh, my question specifically is around training and how we make sure that potential recruits and also the ongoing training of active-duty police officers uh, is up to standard. So I saw that, you know, we have 40 hours of training for uh, specific mental health and behavioral-related calls uh, that existing officers have to part, that they are expected to partake in. Um, we also have uh, training pools coming out of the South Bay in Alameda. Uh, my question comes down to what is being done to assess the, like, ongoing, assess the quality of training that is being provided to these recruits? Um, and also how are we measuring the efficacy and the quality that, of the training that our recruits and our active-duty officers are receiving on an ongoing basis?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to respond to questions as they come?
Yes, please. Yeah, okay, jump in.
Um, so yeah, I can address several of the questions from both callers. But I'll, I'll just, the second caller versus um, the good questions regarding how we evaluate training and how effective is it? Um, are all of, all the training that we provide is um, is certified by the state. Uh, so our, for example, the, 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 the police academy and the effectiveness of the police academies are monitored. Uh, and um, and continually um, examined by a commission established at the state level. Uh, there are certification levels that they must maintain. As individual agencies, um, frankly, we don't, um, while we may participate and we may provide feedback, um, of what we're seeing of recruits coming out of those academies, um, we frankly don't have the capacity to conduct um, comprehensive um, examinations of police academies. That's a monumental task that's done at the state level. The same is done for ongoing training. Um, in order for us to provide ongoing training, we're, uh, the state mandates 24 hours every two years. We provide about 30 hours a year or 60 hours every two years. All of that training is certified and mandated by the state. And they conduct the evaluations and follow-up and, and we kind of frankly rely on um, on their, their evaluations. Uh, it's a very robust um, commission that standardizes training for all police officers in the state. And they uh, they are tasked with evaluating the effectiveness of that training. So I, I hope that answers your question. Obviously, we have our own personal views. If we were dissatisfied with a police academy or dissatisfied with a training class, I know um, speaking personally over the course of my career, there have been uh, training providers that I will not send people to because I'm not satisfied with that, but that's not any type of scientific or um, or uh, um, um, or systematic uh, evaluation. That's just what I'm seeing as, what, the, and the, the return on that investment, I don't see um, as being strong. Um, I don't have any feelings like that right now towards any partic- particular provider. But the main, uh, the responsibility of, of measuring the effectiveness of that training um, falls on the state and we contribute to that and, and we rely on them heavily to uh, to do that. Um, just moving back, um, the, to the previous caller, some of the questions, I'll address three areas. I believe they, um, the, the caller, um, we agree, a 24-hour model or a 24-hour hotline for folks with mental health issues um, is a great thing and there are some resources out there. I know that the county provides some hotlines. Uh, Star Vista provides a, a suicide hotline on a 24-hour basis. Um, Cora provides a 24-hour hotline for those experiencing um, uh, domestic violence within the home. And we think those are great. Um, and I am familiar with the Kahoots model up in Oregon. Um, the difference that we're going at, and I think we're a little bit different, is the Kahoots model you may, you may call regarding an issue that's not immediate. That doesn't matter. They may, they may get out there in the next hour or two. Typically, we're responding to calls where people expect us to show up in 10 minutes. And uh, I think that's the difference where we're trying to um, incorporate a mental health clinician with us to make us more effective in handling, in handling those types of calls. And then I agree with the academy. It's, it's kind of, we kind of, um, you know, we send a, regarding the, the paramilitary aspect of it. Um, you know, a lot, we send a lot of young folks to the police academy and, and we want to make sure that they're responsible and they can manage their time well. And they get, you know, they get trained to shine shoes and march and all that type of stuff. The reality is, is they're never gonna, we're never gonna have them march, uh, or we're never gonna have them do anything like that. Um, but there is a, this, this job does require some discipline and uh, and that's a, that's a mechanism they use to um, to um, to emphasize that level of discipline. So um, I, I, I agree, there are some things in the police academy that we um, that we'll never use in the field. Um, and I think we do a pretty good job in our transition from the, the academy to the uh, to the FTO program in identifying those and, and letting folks know the most important quality you can have as a police officer is the ability to, to talk to somebody, to um, to understand where they're coming from and to, and to communicate effectively. And I think that's the, that's the basis for what we do at, in the FTO program, which I think is, is much more influential on a recruit than the police academy is.
Thanks, Chief. Um, I saw a hand from Valerie. Valerie, if you uh, if you can, put your hand back up so that you can speak. Uh, for now, I'm going to go to Gloria Brown.
Yes, thank you very much. And I just want to personally say thank you to Chief Barberini and his staff and, and those who worked on and took my concern seriously about um, the Alzheimer's and dementia training. I think this is going to make a tremendous um, benef- it's going to be tremendously beneficial for our entire community. And I just hope that there's ongoing training and if HR 6813 passes, that will be incorporated as part of the whole training around uh, working with our dementia and Alzheimer's of, of members of our community. And of course, those, those numbers are growing as we speak. I just want to also say that uh, I am pleased to hear that uh, hopefully a mental health clinician will be brought on board. I'm hopeful that in some way the community can be involved in maybe a two times per year uh, some feedback from the clinician and some exchange of what's working, what isn't working, some recommendations that could be made as uh, community representatives. So again, thank you very much. This was um, a wonderful presentation that I benefited from tremendously.
Excellent. Thank you so much Gloria. I appreciate your comments. Um, it's, it's appreciated very much. And Chief, thanks for mentioning um, our response to dementia and other things. I know it's very dear to many people's hearts. Uh, next I'm going to go to Lisa Diaz Nash. Welcome to the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor Gothols. Good evening, Council, and good evening, Chief Barberini. Thank you to you, but thank you to all the people who worked with you on putting that presentation together. I'm sure that was a lot. I'm sure that was a lot to do and it was well-done. Really gave us a good understanding and lots more questions. My two questions are, number one, in addition to some of the school programs that you talked about, what are the efforts to go out and really recruit people who are in San Mateo to become San Mateo police officers? Because obviously, they would have a whole different level of understanding of the community and networks and connections. And then, number two, on an ongoing basis, what efforts are you making now? And what ideas may you have in future about having the community more involved in providing ideas for new programs, new training, a little bit like Terry said earlier? But also officer feedback, because obviously, they're out on the street or in the police car every day. So what's the process for making sure that those ideas get fleshed out on a regular basis? Thank you.
Sure. So I know you'll find this hard to believe, but most officers are not shy about providing feedback, whether it's solicited or not. So that conversation happens on a daily basis. I attend most of the briefings on a daily basis and I make constant communication with the officers. We just had two full training days over the, in August. It was a training month for us. There's evaluations that the officers complete after each training session to kind of get some feedback on how effective it is. But I will tell you, the most effective feedback that we get from officers is the conversations that we have in briefing or at the trainings to, you know, most police officers are comfortable in this environment. They have some strong opinions. And if they, if they are not happy with the effectiveness of the training, we'll know. It will, it will know, we'll know what steps that are required to fix it. So internally, those lines of communication are pretty open, both on a formal, informal level. From a recruitment standpoint, as you'll notice on one of the slides, I think it was early on, one of the factors we look for in candidates is ties to the community. Not every person we hire does have a tie to the community. We hire some extremely qualified folks that are from other parts of the country and life has led them to this area, and they do a fabulous job. But we do recognize that having ties to San Mateo is important. And we do whatever we can to recruit in our own backyard. All local events, all of those things are important in building that, that, those relationships that would make one of people, what make people want to work for us. The schools, as you mentioned, are very important. Our challenge is, and I'm open to suggestions, is to do both. To identify people who have ties to the community, but create a diverse candidate pool. Sometimes that's hard to do simultaneously because not that we don't have a diverse population living here, it's just trying to encourage folks from all areas of life, backgrounds, ethnicities, whatever, to be interested in law enforcement. And that's why, you know, I'm hopeful that our continued engagement, this real talk, San Mateo, I don't know if it'll sustain. If people, if there's interest, we'll keep doing it. As long as people keep watching, we're gonna, we anticipate that this will be a regular thing for us. And we hope that it resonates with the public, whether we're talking about race relations or we're talking about traffic or we're talking about recruiting, whatever it is. We want this conversation to continue and we hope that's a valuable tool for us, especially as we, as we try to incorporate very specific populations. I will be the first to admit that I don't have the recruiting answers. And whatever, whatever police chief tells you that they have the recruiting answers, they're probably fooling themselves. So we're always looking for new and innovative, we're always trying to outsmart one another in the police world. It's very competitive. And if we can find a new and innovative way to attract quality candidates, we'll do it. So I don't know whether that answered all of your questions, but any suggestions, please send them our way.
I will mention that it is just as competitive to hire great police chiefs. And San Mateo went out of our way to box out and elbow all the other cities to get our newest chief.
I don't know about that.
Our next participant is Arnie. Welcome to the conversation, Arnie.
Yes, this is a question for our police chief. I downloaded the manual that was available under agendas. And there was a page in there very, very close to the beginning, under the accountability section. And unfortunately, you didn't cover that as part of your introduction. And that was something titled, "San Mateo PD: Lexicole Policies and the Number Eight Can't Wait." Could you go into that a little bit and explain the impact of those? I assume those are changes to the existing protocol? Or they are, have been there for some time? If you could give a little history on that? And explain the, any reduction in the effectiveness of the police officer in the field dealing with serious situations?
Sure. So Eight Can't Wait was a campaign to address use-of-force policies in police work. I will tell you that my understanding of our use-of-force policy when I arrived in San Mateo was that we met most of the Eight Can't Wait requirements. However, it wasn't as clear as it could be. There were a couple of things that we blatantly didn't. We still allowed for the carotid restraint, which is sometimes referred to as a chokehold. Technically, they're two different things, but they're referred to as the same. We prohibited that, which falls in line with Eight Can't Wait. We more clearly identified de-escalation as a requirement and a practice within our policy, which was implied in the original policy, but wasn't as overt as it is now, which is a, which is consistent with the Eight Can't Wait. There's a couple of areas where we've had challenges. And I think I talked about these at our policy discussion is, there are a couple that, for example, our policy requires that a police officer issue some type of verbal warning, identify themselves, issue some type of verbal warning before using deadly force. Deadly force is extremely rare. It's not like what you see on TV. Again, I've been doing this job for 26 years. And for the first 20 of it, I actually worked for a living. And I was, I was, I was out there doing police work. And fortunately, I never found myself in a situation where I had to use that level of force. And I'm the rule, not the exception when it comes to that. However, although our policy requires that that warning be given, there is also some language that says only when feasible or when feasible. Because we, I don't want to create a policy that's unattainable or cannot be adhered to by the officer in a safe manner. For example, if somebody is shooting at a third party or at the officer themselves, we're not, the requirement to provide a warning that will cost valuable time would place people in difficult situations, dangerous situations that could have a catastrophic result. So while we require that warning, we do recognize that there will be situations when, when that's not feasible. The same thing goes for shooting at moving vehicles. I am very, I highly encourage and am not a fan at all of shooting at or from moving vehicles. And that's what the policy says, that we won't do that. However, it also allow, it also, we also recognize that, you know, we've seen where vehicles have used, been used as weapons, where it's been a terrorist attack, like we saw in Paris at a gathering, or whether it's been targeted at specific individuals. I, 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 I'm uncomfortable having officers just standing there and watching that happen without having any recourse. So under those extreme circumstances, when the, when somebody's using a vehicle to try to kill somebody, there's, there's an allowance for that. However, the policy is pretty clear that it has to be those extreme circumstances. I think those are probably the most significant areas of change that we've, that we've seen in our policy regarding the Eight Can't Wait. And as far as an operational impact or how that's changed police work, I will tell you that I don't know that I've ever seen a chokehold or a carotid restraint used in the field. And so that, that is not, does not have an impact at all. And the only thing that I think that we have that will help us in the long run from a, from an operational impact is I think the, the policy requires that we document uses of force a little bit more thoroughly than we had documented them in the past. So I think that'll be a good thing. But as far as officer safety and public safety, I don't see any impact to the changes in policy.
Thank you very much, Chief. I'm gonna go to our next member of the public, Santino Tirino.
Hi. Hello. So my name, that's my son's name popping up, sorry, on the Zoom. My name is Jasmine Tirino, and I am a student in the San Francisco State's Public Administration Program. I'm focusing on studying urban administration. So the purpose of my participation this evening is focused on really observing this meeting. It was a hot topic right now. And just a couple of comments that I had and a question is, one, just thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I think you provided a very comprehensive presentation on the recruitment and training. And also, I think, you know, you're just putting your, it sounds like the department's putting their best foot forward in trying to incorporate, you know, diversity. One of the things that I heard an earlier community member mention is, you know, the, the evaluation component. And I did hear you speak on the idea of the dashboard. And I was going to maybe suggest, is there an ask, is there a way that the evaluation that is done by the state, can that data be collected from the state to be shared specific to San Mateo? And perhaps that can be incorporated and shared with the community as a way of community engagement?
Yeah, the answer to your question is, well, I will tell you, we, we are required to report to the state uses of force, crime statistics, and other data every year. I should, I should probably know this, but I never really had the reason to look. I don't know how the, I know that the state compiles that data statewide and shares it. I don't know the format in which they share it. So that would be on the, the state's Department of Justice site. On, they request that data from us on an annual basis. I just don't know how they share it. So the first, the answer to the first part of the question is, yes, we share that with the state. The second part of the question is, I don't know how they then share it, if that makes any sense.
And did we lose you, Jasmine? Okay, I think that that answered the question and I appreciate it, Chief. I'm gonna go now to Valerie. Valerie, join the conversation. And anyone else, any of our attendees who'd like to raise their hand, please raise your hand and we'll get to you soon. Go ahead, Valerie. Valerie, I'm gonna have you check your volume and see if, I'll come back to you in just a minute. I'm gonna go to Heather Cleary. Hi, Heather. Welcome again.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. And with all the great work that you're doing for the mental health support, I really appreciate the mindfulness work and the work with the Alzheimer's Association. But what is missing to me is the acknowledgement of racism in our systems and in our police department. Because it's there, it's in all of our systems. So when you think about next steps and what you are doing, what I'd like to see in addition to what you're doing, and I know I'm asking a lot, but we need a lot, is what are you doing to make the police department an anti-racist organization? Especially with regards around traffic stops. There's so much violence that happens from a traffic stop that we see. And all of our activities, we all need to work on this. The trainings you mentioned are an excellent start. But I really want to frame all of this work around making sure that we live in an anti-racist city and that we are doing active work to get there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Heather Cleary. Chief, do you want to maybe tie in some of the state laws that were being looked at last night? Laws that are designed to achieve greater racial equity? Or maybe address the cultural aspects of a police department? And what we've seen wrong in some other places and how we can build an anti-racist community here?
Yeah, I think that there has been a lot of proposed local legislation. And I'm still waiting to, I know that some of it was, some of it passed last night. Some of it was changed significantly. I really would like to take a deep dive into, into study that and to see how those bills were amended and the ones that passed, how they were amended to see how they're gonna affect us. So it's probably a little premature to talk about those. I know that there is a state effort that we will, that we're embarking on now, and it's a big task for us. I mean, some of the stuff we do is, is not because we don't want to. Sometimes it's just, it's hard for us to do. There's, we are entering a, a time where we're gonna be collecting data regarding traffic stops. And that's, and that's by law. And it will, I think it'll give us a better picture of what we're seeing regarding traffic stops and how and why they're, they're made. I mean, the irony is, is I mean, three hours ago, I was in a traffic enforcement meeting where we were trying to have, how were we gonna enhance traffic enforcement in certain areas? So we're trying to balance the, the request for traffic enforcement and try to do that in equitable manner. But moving forward, we are actively working to comply with, with the state requirement that comes up in about 12 months. That's gonna require us to collect 16 points of data for every time we interact with someone from the public, including traffic stops. So I think that'll go a long way into painting us a picture. Till that, till that point, I think that, you know, the steps that we're taking regarding building a diverse workforce, the, the, the training regarding bias is a big one. And a, and a realistic training regarding bias. I mean, this is, you know, I think that when people talk about biased training, they talk about, you talk about training that we send cops to training on how not to be biased. To me, that oversimplifies it. In my mind, we all have biases. And I think that whether it's based on race or based on personality or based on whatever it is, I think raising that awareness is, is the most important first step, rather than us being, to think that we can just fix it with, with some type of training. It's more of a, it's more of a, it is a long-term approach. It's a gradual approach. My experience with this county has been, has been a positive one and a good one. But we can always get better. And, and I think whether that's through legislation and compelling us to do better, that's just one avenue. I think we are actively taking steps. And we're not the only law enforcement agency that's, that's really trying to get ahead of this. I commend other agencies who are doing similar or even more creative things that are really trying to, to move forward and get ahead of this. And, you know, it's all about putting one foot, one foot forward and getting better every day. And I think that's, that's where we're at right now.
It's interesting you brought up the stats, Chief. I think sometimes until you measure something, you don't know and you, until it's staring you in the face, the disparities maybe aren't fully aware. And embracing a culture of anti-racism is, I think, an entirely new way of looking at a police department. So I think that's something for all of us to continue to maybe think about. What, what does that really look like? A culture in a police department that embraces anti-racism? I think that's a really unique question from Heather. So let me go to our next participant, Valerie. Valerie, can you hear us? And if, Valerie, if you're still having sound issues, maybe I'll go to Arnie again. Arnie, did you have a follow-up on the Eight Can't Wait?
No, it was not a follow-up on the Eight Can't Wait. It was a second question relative to the recruiting procedures and minimum requirements. I see, or I was a little surprised to see that a misdemeanor conviction would be an acceptable minimum requirement, as long as it was not a felony. And as we all know, a lot of felonies are downgraded to misdemeanors. When a couple of years ago, misdemeanor would have, a misdemeanor today would not be the same as a misdemeanor a couple of years ago. And maybe the chief can shed a little light on why misdemeanors are, are acceptable for a minimum requirement.
So that, yeah, I'd be happy to. So that's a state requirement. And similar to the credit check that we talked about earlier, that's a case-by-case basis. So in my mind, it's not always whether it's a misdemeanor or not, it's the type of crime. Sometimes we get, you know, you may have somebody who maybe got convicted of vandalism. when they were, when they were young and did something stupid. And, and, you know, we've all done stupid things when we're younger. That would be a lot different than maybe somebody who was convicted of theft or stealing from an employer or anything like that where it goes to integrity, it goes to credibility, those types of things. So rather than the classification of the crime, obviously by state law, felony precludes anyone from being a police officer. But when it comes to misdemeanor convictions, honestly, very rarely do we, do our applicants even have those convictions. But when they do, because they are applying, they usually are, you know, did something stupid a long time ago. And it's, it's something that, that makes a lot of sense that a young person might do at a young age that is inconsequential, they were just, they just got caught doing something bad. I'm more concerned with crimes that speak to honesty, integrity, and credibility. I have a real problem with theft, I have a real problem with like, we get some embezzlement-type crimes. Those are the things that concern me because I, I think that illustrates, you know, we're asking these people to operate with a great deal of autonomy when they're out in the street interacting with the public and we're trusting them to be honest stewards of keeping the community safe. And I'm more concerned with actions that speak to how honest and straightforward somebody was. And if somebody smoked marijuana in high school, I'm, I'm much more okay with that than if somebody, you know, was stealing from their employer four years ago, if that makes sense.
I think it does. I've also heard people talk about how there's a racial disparity in kids growing up and who gets caught for the marijuana like you're talking about in high school. And, and your applicant pool is going to look a whole lot more white if you can't accept anybody who has a misdemeanor. And, and you want to have the broadest possible applicant pool and get as many people as you can. So that's, I think that's probably a good thing. I want to go to Valerie now. Valerie, we have promoted her and Valerie, I'm going to ask you to unmute and try to join the conversation.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Oh, great. I'm so sorry for the difficulty.
No, it's no problem. I'm glad you're here.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I wanted to basically commend you for taking a step to put into your system an embedded mental health clinician. I also agree that a 24-hour access to this person and involvement is, would be really beneficial since people can't really schedule their crises. I hope that the department can get the support that it needs to make that possible. I also, you know, based on, you know, my understanding of the needs of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and particularly those with autism spectrum disorders, which are often a hidden disability to police, but have a huge impact on the evolution of any kind of encounter, would argue for the need, or plead actually for the need for a mental health clinician who also has expertise, experience with, and interest in intellectual and developmental disabilities, particularly autism spectrum disorders, because these folks can experience destabilizing crises. And, you know, very often, you know, it is a wide spectrum of abilities and each individual is unique. But what's, what cannot, what isn't unique is really difficulty in navigating encounters in conventional, expected and often required ways based on their disability, which can be a very confusing component to law enforcement as to make quick decisions. You know, the way police are trained to establish a command presence and drive folks into a state of fight or flight very rapidly, that's not necessary. And understanding an ability to identify or keep that on police radar mentally, that they may be encountering somebody with autism who cannot comply with, you know, expected commands, can't even process them sometimes, is really critical. There have been a number of fatalities over decades involving people with autism who, who haven't been able to quote comply unquote as a direct result of their neurological deficits. And again, this is a wide spectrum, but these folks really need to be on your radar. And it would be exceptionally helpful for a mental health clinician to have a good understanding of people with autism and be able to be a team member in providing ongoing trainings around these needs. There are a number of folks in San Mateo County with autism who've grown up in family homes who otherwise would have been in a developmental center in the past. They're exquisitely vulnerable and they need the understanding and support of law enforcement. So this is a plea, and I'm so glad that the Alzheimer's folks are being included as well in robust trainings. I think autism spectrum disorders need to be included as well. And for the police to get the support they need in keeping this, you know, unique group of individuals in mind who don't intend to be non-compliant, but who can be totally overwhelmed. So thank you, thank you for listening to this. I really, I really do urge you to, to put on board a mental health clinician who does have that expertise in developmental and intellectual disabilities too, but particularly autism spectrum disorders. They're frequent.
Valerie, I think you muted for just a second. Valerie, do you want to unmute and finish?
Sure, sure. You know, and I want to thank you again very, very much. You know, I've listened to some national police trainers on, on the issue of autism. There are a couple of very well-known ones nationally. But more recently, I heard an exceptionally good one from a director of a non-public school here locally. It was memorable, it was concrete, it gave people tools in a very, very clear and helpful way. So if, you know, if there's an opportunity to provide a resource and to be included in that discussion of community needs moving forward, I, I think that that, that would be incredibly helpful to this very vulnerable group of people.
Valerie, thank you so much for joining the conversation, for adding to the conversation. You identify certainly a population that that it can be dangerous to interact with police, whether it's someone with autism who's non-verbal or has an anxiety that's part of it, where they get into that fight-or-flight response that you mentioned. It's also present for people with dementia. And Chief, not to be too direct, but we saw it just a couple of years ago in a situation that unfolded in Millbrae with Chinadu Okobi. When you see, when you see a situation that escalates very quickly and a person is not understanding the commands or not complying with the commands, that escalation can, can go very badly. And whether it's autism or dementia or other forms of anxiety, we can do more. What are we doing? Thanks, Chief.
Well, so, so it's a very important point. And to be honest, we have, we have family members of officers who are on the spectrum and they're very sensitive to that. It's a very personal thing. A good friend of mine teaches at the South Bay Police Academy and, and he has a daughter who's in her late teens, early twenties now, who's non-verbal and actually brings her into the classroom. And there's some, there's some very valuable lessons learned in training there. But we're always, you know, we're always looking, hopefully, the addition, and again, we have, it's not there yet, we, our proposal's submitted, we're working with the county to get there. But I'm hopeful that the, the addition of this clinician will be an evolutionary process and will evolve to address needs that we encounter in the community. And I foresee this as being one of them. And if we can leverage that and expand what we're doing to, to address these these individuals, I think that would be a good thing. We're very sensitive to it, it's a very personal thing here at the police department. I mean, there are close relatives of our officers that are, that are on the spectrum and, and I think it's a very, very important point that's made. And, and we need to capitalize on whatever we can to make ourselves better. We'll respond to those types of calls.
Thanks, Chief. Let's go to Dennis Parker. Thanks for joining the conversation.
Good evening. My name is Suella Parker. And I just tuned in to this meeting and all I've heard was just good information. I want to thank the police chief and the mayor of San Mateo. This was a very good meeting tonight. I think this is about my second time in San Mateo City Council meeting. But I want to just comment on Valerie. Valerie said some good information because I have a granddaughter who has autism. She's a smart girl, very smart. But they seem to think differently than normal people. But that's, that's the only problem with her. So Valerie just, I mean, Valerie just gave some good information. Also, I want to say to Gloria, I want to thank Gloria tonight because I got in just in time to hear some of her comments and everything. And it was just so good and I support Gloria. You know, lots of people are getting Alzheimer's. And I think that the police should have some training, more training for this Alzheimer's group. You know, because they could cause a problem to be really, really huge and out of control when it doesn't need to happen that way. And I think it's just because the police doesn't have the training to deal with these kind of people. So I, I just think the police need to have a little more training in that aspect. And I just thank you for this meeting. I'm hearing some good information. And I thank the mayor and the police chief. Thank you very much.
Ms. Parker, thank you. Thank you for joining the conversation and thank you for bringing that up. If there was a magic training that the chief and I could put all the officers through that would, that would prevent bad outcomes, we would, we would do it in a heartbeat. And I think, I think one of the things that the chief outlined for us tonight is that we go well beyond what's required and do a lot more training than, than some other departments. And there's even additional tools that I know that the San Mateo Police Department has invested in, like the simulator, in order to make sure that we're preventing bad outcomes. Chief, did you want to expand on that at all?
No, I'd just like to echo the thanks to Mrs. Brown. She's been working closely with our staff and, and I know she's spending a lot of her own time in, in doing that. And so thank you to Gloria for that. She's been, she's been great for us. And, and I appreciate your comments. Yeah, there's a lot of training components I didn't get into because it would, it would take forever for us to go through each specific training. But I did want to hit the high points of what I think are the, the concerns within the community today and how we're addressing those and frankly, where we can, where we can get better.
Ms. Parker, did you say your first name was Suella? We may have lost you. Thank you for joining us. Now I'm going to go to Jean-Marie Houston. Welcome to the conversation.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank the city council and the chief for providing so many opportunities for the community to participate in these conversations. This is in front of us every day on the news cycle. I'm a parent, a mom, a law enforcement officer, and her husband, who is also an active officer. My daughter was injured seriously in the line of duty and was retired a few years ago. And I just want to say, listening to the and seeing the requirements for the hiring process in San Mateo going so far above and beyond what is required, I do remember that whole process, step by step, when my daughter was going through it. The interviews, it's extremely thorough and rigorous. I think a lot of people don't realize just how difficult it is to get all the way through the field training and become a sworn officer working. And it's, it never, the, the learning never ends. I want to also applaud the idea of a community police academy. I worry because I have pretty unfiltered information for years and years now on what some people in blue are thinking and how it feels to them. And I want to really say that I, I think it's, I think it's a dangerous situation when communities begin to sort of draw lines by saying that the people who are sworn to be our guardians and are, are enemies. And I, I just, I think that the idea of helping community members learn more and develop a sense of empathy themselves about our law enforcement colleagues. They are our brothers, our sisters, our mothers and fathers and cousins and aunts and uncles, our children. I think it's really critical. And one of the experiences I had was doing a ride-along. And I am reminded by my daughter, and I don't know if San Mateo does this, that police departments do offer ride-alongs to people who are interested. And it's an enormous privilege to be able to do that and it's quite an eye-opener. So I was just going to ask if that is actually something that is done in the city of San Mateo? And just to speak up by saying, thank you so much to the city for, for doing this, for really trying to build deep connections for our excellent department.
Thank you so much for those comments and for that question. I'm going to mention, I've certainly spent lots of time with police officers. I know Councilmember Lee has been on a ride-along. I'm sure Councilmember Pappan and some of the other council members have been on, on ride-alongs. Rick, I know you went on ride-alongs too. And I know Eric is on PAL and knows the law enforcement inside and out. Chief, do we allow members of the public to do that too?
Yes, we do. I mean, obviously COVID has changed things considerably, but in a normal world, yes, that was, that's allowable. We encourage that.
I think part of the, the emphasis in the comments is that it's a really important time to elevate the profession. I, I really want to make sure that we aren't, that, that we don't allow the national conversation to make, to make it feel like law enforcement is not something that people want to go into. We, we want the best and the brightest to be interested in a, in a career in law enforcement. We've been so fortunate to recruit the, the team members that we have with our San Mateo police officers. And so if the next generation of cops are going to be ones who want to serve and be protectors, we have to make sure that in our language, that we are elevating the profession as a whole and making sure people still know that it is a noble profession and we can make it, we can make it better. I want to go back to Gloria Brown, who raised her hand again and you have more comments for us?
No, no more comments. I just wanted to say that Mrs. Parker's first name is Luella.
Luella. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Take you, take care. Luella, we got it. And on to Lawrence. Lawrence, join the conversation. Thank you. I lost Lawrence. Jasmine Tiarino, did you have more comments?
I just had one comment to what you said, Mayor, in regards to, about the language and elevating the profession of police. I think that's really critical right now with the nation topic around defunding the police. And I feel like, I mean, as a student myself right now in this time in my career path, I feel like it's, the media plays a big part in providing certain information that kind of just draws away from what that really looks like. And so I really support what you said. And for Chief to kind of take that in mind as well because police are necessary. I mean, their roles are very critical to our communities. And I think public safety is now. I understand the ideas that people have that, you know, excessive force or different things like that, that in very certain circumstances where situations have gotten out of hand, it can't necessarily speak for every community. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you so much for your comments. Obviously, I appreciate that and I agree. And it's equally as important for us in law enforcement and in government to call out wrongdoing when we see it and to make sure that we're not saying that everybody's perfect because we're not. And when we see wrongdoing, we have to admit it and we have to hold it accountable. Lawrence, Lawrence, you're unmuted. Go ahead, Lawrence.
All right, cool. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. So I guess for me, definitely a good discussion this evening. It starts for me is more who's going to guard the guardians? It's like this whole idea and metaphor of shifting to this guardianship approach. Who's going to be the oversight of that? So normally you have proper checks and balances. What is that check and balance? As far as I'm concerned, I don't think we have a civilian review board when it comes to a police department. At least I couldn't find anything on the website after searching for different things. So to me, I think something like that would be good to have something in place before the need is there for it. So that was one thing I definitely wanted to point out. Second, it's like the whole concept of training. I mean, there's a lot of military type style training that goes into police training initially. It would be nice to see more classroom style and critical thinking going into some of the training. So taking some of that combat out and putting more control into taking more thought of action when in the field. So hopefully by the time when they do become a pressing situation, if there's more thought instead of more aggression applied to that situation. Obviously, that would be a case by case thing, but just something that came to mind. I think that's all I have. Nothing else.
Thank you very much for those comments and those questions. I want to, I should mention, Chief, back in Alameda County, I did participate in in teaching at the academy in the East Bay. I did participate in training several of the police departments. So I know that they get a lot of in-classroom training as well. You probably remember that from going through the academy and a lot of the training that other officers went through. I taught for a few years when I was here in San Mateo County in the South Bay Academy as well. So there's a lot of classroom training that goes into it. It's not just military style training. What else? Do you want to hit some of the other aspects of those questions? Guardian, who are the guardians of the guardians?
Well, I mean, like I mentioned in my presentation, I mean, I have a boss. And at the end of the day, I report to the city manager and and I'm extremely comfortable. Given the structure and size of our city, I think it works extremely well. I think that we do have a built-in checks and balances with both the city attorney's office and HR that those lines of communication are both formal and informal and they're well established. So I'm comfortable with it. I mean, obviously, I'm I serve at the pleasure of the city manager and who serves at the pleasure of the council. So I mean, that's from my perspective, I think it works well. But that's just my experience.
We do hold our officers accountable and there's a high standard that we hold them to. And you mentioned the internal structures that are at play with HR, with the city manager, with you, with the city attorney. Externally, we have the DA's office and the DA's inspectors who do investigations when there's using force issues and things like that. So there's certainly multiple levels of accountability. But those vary from county to county and city to city. So it can be it can be a different standard in different places. Drew, Drew, welcome and join the conversation.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for having this. I'm like learning a lot and both from the slides, but also the discussion and the interactive nature of the discussion. So there's a little bit of back and forth. Just enough to understand some things deeper and I very much appreciate this format. So that's first off, and then I'll try to blast through just a few things and then be quiet maybe another round later. But so there's been a lot in this call even to add more to the police responsibilities and a lot of those, pretty much everything sounds great. I'm wondering, is there a process to review the manual from time, maybe it's every year or two years where I go through and you know, this part is obsolete. We do not need to care about this rule or something. When I hear about how thick that is and the general trend is just add, add, add. And the expectation at some level is the police to be perfect. And they're still human and still some things are going to happen. So just a little something about that. And then the other was the recruitment and I guess from the presentation, I almost take it away. And if I go back to a previous presentation on the police staffing, it's almost like several of those staffing positions on some chart are in reality just ongoing recruitment slots. If it takes two years to essentially get a police officer on board, like we have to be hiring, we have to be interviewing people for our expected need a year and a half from now. And I think in the future presentations or in some stuff to call that out, to make that more explicit because it's not just someone leaves and we can backfill that position within a month or few months. And then so my kind of question slash could be added to a future presentation is in those buckets, when you talked about the very, as going through the candidates, I'm imagining you start out with 100 people interested and you're dropping people and you're getting down to one person. And it would be nice just to have rough numbers on that process and how much this is costing. Not because I want to know how much it costs, it's just it's $200,000 to $300,000 to get someone fully qualified after two years or something in it to understand.
It's a million dollars, Drew.
Okay. Yeah. And it'd just be great to just impart of that slide to have some of that. So when we're like, this costs money to do what we want it to do. And just having that visibility on the funnel and the cost for that. And then just the last, just an easy one, just I hear the vehicle cameras and you talked about the front. I'm wondering if they're more 360 options. So they're getting the sides and the back and stuff. So there's more of a view of the whole site. And I'll be quiet. And again, thank you very much for this evening.
Drew, thanks for joining the conversation. Thanks for your questions and your comments. Chief, did you have some thoughts, responses?
Sure. The first question regarding policy, I'm assuming it's regarding our policy manual about review. There's an annual review of our policy manual, not as in-depth as when I first came on board, when I wanted to go line by line. But we do review it to make sure that it's relevant. In actuality, there are more additions to the policy manual every year than there are removals of policy. And that usually happens during the year with new case law, new legislation, new policy that comes down the road. So that's a, that's a, that's a living, breathing document that we constantly take a look at. He's absolutely correct regarding recruitment. We have, even if we're fully staffed, when I say fully staffed, I'm doing the air quotes for those that can't see me. If somebody asks me how many vacancies I have and I say zero, that could really mean five or six because I may have folks who are in the academy or who in who are in different stages of training and they're not filling that spot in patrol for us. So when we look on paper and look at staffing levels, just because it shows that we may be doing pretty well and have two or three vacancies, which is good for an organization our size. In reality, that might be six to nine, just because we have folks who are in the training program who are assuming one of those roles. And then interesting concept with the vehicle, I wonder what that would look like with 360 cameras. I have not, I have not seen that model, but that would be, that would be very interesting.
You know, just like the Google vehicle that drives around, just like the Google vehicle that does all the street views.
I'm thinking we could just go to Tesla's. Don't they have like a 360 camera and then we, I'll talk to the city manager about going to.
You know, they do. You've been investigating those Tesla car burglaries. You know, they have those cameras all around.
I'm sure it's in the budget.
We have done it. I want to say something. We we made it through all the hands and that conversation felt a lot different than running through everybody and giving them one minute where it's not a dialogue and there's no responses. And so I want to thank our city manager and the police chief and our city clerk and all the staff for facilitating this conversation, for coming back for another opportunity. And just like I said at the beginning, this isn't going to be the, this isn't the first and it's not going to be the last. I want to give everybody an opportunity to give some closing thoughts on what they heard tonight. I saw a hand over there. Give us your thoughts.
There's so many thoughts, but I'll try to keep it brief. I wanted to, I wanted to raise up the point about the role of housing and the need that has has been expressed in so many iterations of this conversation about making community policing the foundation of the work. And the need to build relationships, the need to, to make sure that our police are deeply ingrained in the San Mateo way and our culture are rooted here. And I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I shared the story. When I went to the ride along and I did, you know, I sat through the briefing and met all of the officers starting out on their, you know, on their shift, 75% of them don't live in the county, not, never mind the city. And so I think it's a really important, for me, it's a really important point and priority. If we talk, we're talking about community policing, I think that we need to overlay that conversation with the lack of access to affordable housing and how that actually does play a part in, you know, in our potential attrition and recruitment barriers for stabilizing our police force. So I feel like, you know, it's, maybe this is not a question for this conversation, but I think that this is potentially a topic that we want to return to. And when we're talking about, you know, where where the intersections are for housing and our first responders and the ties to community policing and making sure that we're shoring up these foundations and creating those opportunities for that to happen and be successful. So that's point number one. I think that the, one of the things that jumped out at me in facilitating the conversation between you, Chief, and Ms. Gloria Brown was how receptive you are and how personally committed you are to being responsive and also the personal story that you have about your own family history with Alzheimer's. And and I think that that process and that dialogue that took place, which resulted in you going in, then pursuing the idea of, you know, enhancing this focus of training for Alzheimer's for our PD. I think that, you know, for me, the question is like, how do we systematize that dialogue? How do we systematize the focusing in on on our training being, you know, our community having input into the kinds of training that we need. And when we're looking at the changes in demographics, we're looking at an aging population, we're seeing more and more response calls for issues of mental health and addiction and and, you know, people with cognitive impairments or, you know, developmental disabilities. Those are things that that we know that we're seeing. And so I'm curious to, I want, I'm more curious as we go through this conversation on how, how we make sure that we're, we're you know, structuring processes and so that it's not, you know, it's not, it's not individually driven by your personal background and commitment to the issue of Alzheimer's that we're actually creating a channel and a funnel to capture community interest and community needs and that that is a driving factor and how we, how we, like where we focus enhancements and training and how we define those priority areas. So that's a point and sort of, you know, a question that I have. And then the last point and question is, is really about ongoing and our continued work with PCRC. And I know that we're very limited in the kinds of dialogues and format that we can have because we're doing social distancing. I think that this format worked really well. As just, you know, in terms of the back and forth, I feel like I feel like there's probably still ways to go in terms of going deeper into accessing folks who have not yet been a part of this conversation and tapping into more voices. And so I'm, I think that maybe one of the things we want to look at is is that contract with PCRC and making sure that, that we're really utilizing them for the depth of community community access that they have to draw out hard to reach populations. And so I just, you know, I'm curious as we move forward with the, with the me talks or the real talks sessions, how we, that contract will evolve with PCRC and if there are ways to draw out more, more community members who probably haven't yet really been a part of the conversation. So those are my thoughts slash questions. I know this is, this is going to be an ongoing conversation. So we don't, you know, need to respond right now, I guess.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just be real brief here. I think what we saw tonight here is a police department and a city doing its best to respond to community concerns and improve. Even with this meeting and how it's being held, we, I'm sure a lot of council members that I know staff got a lot of feedback about how the last meeting went. And you know, we're not claiming to be a perfect city, a perfect department, but we are making the commitment that we're always going to strive to improve. And I think that's what we're seeing tonight. I'm very thankful for that. And I'm very proud of it as well. I liked a lot of what I saw tonight. A few of the things that I was really happy to see was how we're working now with, or we're working towards working with licensed mental health clinicians. The transparency and the idea of the dashboard. I'm very looking forward to seeing that. And I'm also very encouraged about the strides we're making towards having a police force that looks like our community, a diverse police force. I want to thank the chief and his staff for his ongoing work on this. I mean, it's not just this presentation. This is just one small piece, but thank you. We know you put a lot of work into it. I also want to thank our city manager and his team. And perhaps most of all, I want to thank the community for their discussion this evening. And this discussion went a lot more, a lot differently and a lot, it was a lot more productive than the last one. And really, we can't have this discussion unless we, we have our community dialing in and having like frank dialogue that's very civil. And that's what we had here tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Eric. Format definitely matters. Rick, Councilmember Benia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to say that it was really obvious tonight that from the comments that were made by the chief that are actually setting a path forward that I think our police department has not really completely taken before with some of the things that the chief mentioned, directions that we're looking at and new ideas that we're going to look at going forth with. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Drew, and all of us council members who are out here also listening, thinking and talking about this. I think we're getting on to a good path. I appreciate the very thoughtful comments that we got for the public tonight. Though I have to say that I lament the fact that there were only really a small number of the members of the public involved. So when I hear the chief saying he is looking for ways to try and broaden the discussion and much to the credit of the comments that both AMO, I mean, Councilwoman Lee and and much to the credit of the comments that both Ammo, I mean, Councilwoman Lee and Council member Rodriguez made, yes, I feel that while we're making good progress, we really need to broaden and deepen the discussion. I'm looking forward to that. It feels like we're heading in that direction. We have more work to do, but I'm happy to be part of this. And so, thank you.
Any other final thoughts, questions, comments? Councilmember Pappen?
Yeah, I'll just say, I would concur. This is going to be an ongoing process. I think this was a really comprehensive presentation tonight, and I appreciated getting it. It gave me certainly a more global perspective, and I think there are areas we can drill down on certainly, and we will continue to try to meet the needs of our community with being somewhat fluid and nimble as our community's needs change. This is not an absolute, not by any stretch of the imagination, but it was a real comprehensive overview, and I was very grateful to get it, and I look forward to the ongoing process.
Thank you again to our city manager, to our police chief, to all of our staff. This was a good format. I appreciated the back and forth, the dialogue that happened, and we will continue it. We will continue it. Appreciate it, everybody. Have a good night, and I'll see you at our council meeting on Tuesday after Labor Day, Tuesday, the 8th. See you then.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.